Five, this is the planning board. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
Motion to open the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have to do roll calls on every one of these, so Secretary can hear. Rick?
Rick Ellis.
Aye. Brian?
Brian Dischamps, aye.
Mark Sanorizio, aye. With that, this meeting is being audio and videotaped through Zoom. Will we welcome everybody? With that, did you guys get all the paperwork that I had sent you?
Yep.
And we might as well just keep going on. I have five at six thirty-six. This is a public hearing continuation proposed commercial development. One fifty-eight Main Street, one sixty-six Main Street, and Seventeen Wing Road. New England. New England Retail Development LLC applicant represented by Patrick McLaughlin PE, GPI Greenman Peterson, Inc., site plan review approved required. This applicant is withdrawing their application and submitting a new plan. The case is available to Town Clerk's office by appointment only. With that, they are just, or if anybody wants to speak on their half, they are just withdrawing the original application and coming back with a new proposed application. Is there a motion to?
I would make a motion, we accept their withdrawal.
There a second? All in favor? Rick?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Unanimous? With that, if I'm going too fast, people, just let me know. This isn't coming on till six fifty, but we're running a little early. I hope I'm within my ramifications. This is proposed commercial development, same address, one fifty-eight Main Street, one sixty-six Main Street, Seventeen Wing Road. New England Development LLC application represented by Patrick McLaughlin PE, GPI Greenman Peterson, Inc., site plan review required. This proposal is for a gas station and convenience store within the Business Village District. The applicant is seeking a public hearing. Anybody from New England out there?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, my name is Frank Montoro. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm representing the applicant tonight. I'm the site engineer for the project with Greenman Peterson. Also on the call here is Phil Lombardo, our attorney. The applicant or developer Mickey Higgins couldn't make it tonight. I think we're gonna keep this short and sweet anyway, but.
We're gonna keep it down, maybe with like a fifteen-minute dissertation. There will be no question and answer period because this is a new application, but everybody will be able to see the plans at Town Hall when they make an appointment.
Yeah, so just to highlight where we left off, the applicant was last before this board, I believe it was January twenty-first. Mickey Higgins was there. He discussed the latest, or the current plan at that time with the board and decided to withdraw the application and make some changes to the plan. So we resubmitted an application.
You just broke up for a minute. You just broke up for a minute there. Could you repeat that last paragraph you were saying?
Sure, so subsequent to that meeting, we resubmitted a revised application and revised site plans to the Plan Board on January twelfth to request a new public hearing, which is what prompted the application tonight. So basically, the intent of the meeting tonight is ask the board to accept that new application and set a public hearing date. I do, if you want, I could give you some high-level highlights of the changes to the site plan. If you'd like, I could share my screen. Can you do that?
If you'd be kind enough, and again, I want to tell all the people out there, there is no question and answer period from us or the public. And we will do the next one when we put the ad in the paper and have a public hearing. Everybody is allowed to speak. This is a whole new venue, so if you would go from there, Frank.
Okay, sure. So can you see my screen at this point?
Yes. Brian, can you see it?
Yep.
Rick? Okay. Everybody else can see it?
So this is the original plan. I have the original plan and I have the revised plan. I'm just gonna kind of toggle between them to kind of show you what's different. So as I mentioned before, this is the original application with the original sized building and this drive-through lane here. The three driveways on Main Street, one driveway on Wing Road, the fuel canopy located here with four dispensers. The new application is this plan here. You can see we've eliminated the drive-through lane, which came around the side of the building, eliminated the driveway here, proposed on Main Street. And we've actually reduced the size of this building by about two hundred and ninety square feet. So the original plan, if I go back to that, that building was four thousand two hundred and eighty-five square feet. And this new building is three thousand nine hundred and ninety-five square feet. So we're two hundred and ninety square foot reduction. So with the reduction in the footprint and the elimination of the drive-through window located here, we've submitted some revised building elevations, which are part of that site plan package that we submitted. So there's details in there on the new building elevations. As I mentioned, we reduced the driveways to three on Main Street, so we still have a right-in-only driveway here for access into the canopy. Full access proposed here and full access proposed on Wing Road on this side. Some other architectural changes when you get to the plans, the side of the building here facing Main Street, we embellished that side, made some improvements to that architecture. We added this hedge row here between the building and the road. We also added some arborvitae along this side, a lot line here, abutting this neighbor. So as a result of these changes, there was a reduction in the purview area from about sixty percent on this original plan here to about fifty-six point eight percent. So that's kind of a high-level overview of what's changed. We didn't want to get into too many details tonight, but I'll just close with that and see if the board has any questions and and see if we can have the board accept the application instead of hearing it.
Well, as I said before, no questions from the board or the public. We accept this. Is there a motion to accept the applicant who's seeking a public hearing?
Motion to accept this submission and to set a public hearing date.
We will be, public hearing date will be March eighteenth at six forty-five PM. Is that okay with all the board members? And is it okay with the proponent, the applicant?
It is, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm just gonna say, seeking the public hearing from the applicant is, there's a motion from Rick. Rick, say aye.
Aye.
And second by Brian, say aye.
And aye.
All in favor by unanimous decision, aye. All three of us on a roll call. That was it. Thank you very much for your time. We sure appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One question, how about one from Pat? We'll ask that. Will there be a stormwater plan for this?
Yeah, yeah, there's a drainage report that was filed with the application.
No problem. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Stay out of the snow. With that, thank you, gentlemen, on the board. I appreciate that. We have a public hearing for fifty-two Morris's Lane. They had sent us an email that it would be running late. I don't know if you folks are out there from Morris's Lane.
Hi, this is Brandon Smith, Borrego Solar with Morris's Lane, but I that was us that you're referring to. I have a continuance tonight.
That's correct. I will read it. You had sent me an email on it today. Tim Sanorizio, Borrego Solar, is hereby requesting a continuance of hearing for our solar and energy storage project currently scheduled for February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one to the next meeting date or further date. Covenant to the board, convenient to the board. We appreciate this board, Brandon Smith. Thank you. We will accept that. Gentlemen, is there a motion to accept the continuance?
Motion to accept the continuance for fifty-two Morris's Lane.
Second.
Aye, Brian, second. Brian made the motion. Rick seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All three of us, Mark, Brian, and Rick accepted. With that, we will put you on. Gentlemen, I think we will need at least a half an hour for New England Retail. Do you want to give them more than that for the next meeting?
No, a half an hour is fine, Mark.
Yeah.
You know, because if we get it done more quickly, then we just end up waiting for the next one to come around.
Yep. So with that, we'll give you a half hour for New England. We will make seven fifteen for fifty-two Morris's Lane. Is that okay with you, Brandon?
Yes, that's good.
Fifty-two Morris's Lane at seven fifteen. With that, thank you very much for your time, Brandon.
Thank you. Have a good night.
We're moving along rather quickly here. Seven forty-five. I know we're early again. What time? We got six forty-five. Huh? Well, we'll keep moving on. Proposed ground-mounted array, fourteen forty-seven Park Drive. You folks out there at all? I think they're not coming until later, so with that, I think we can continue on to the next one. I don't know if eight PM, we're running real early today. Three oh one Perry Hill. Dave DeViggnan, are you out there at all?
Yes, sir, aye.
If we're too early, just let us know. I don't know if you get everybody here. I'll just bring you in because a couple of people are running late, but if you want to do your thing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to wait until the butter is online with his attorney. We expect them, and I don't want to proceed unless they're.
I understand completely, and we will wait for that. Once they do, please feel free to yell out.
I will.
Thank you very much. Wow, this is really early today. Eight fifteen proposed solar array, ten fifty-two Main Street. Steve, are you out there? I know we're running real early. I guess not. He has also the next two, so what I will do at this point is read some of the mail. We have some bills from South Coast Media. I signed those. Those are for four hundred and fifty-nine ninety-six. There are motion to pay those.
Motion to pay.
Second.
There's, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? And let me see what we have for mail. Sorry about the, we're running real early today. I can't believe it. Different things from the appeals on different towns.
Mr. Chairman, this is Brandon Smith. I don't know if this would be a good time while you have time, but regarding two fifty-one Mendel, I know there was that issue to.
Yep, I was bringing that up. That was on the end of my list here. If you will hold on one second. I thought I had my stuff together here. Two fifty-one Mendel. Rick and Brian, I don't know if you have the sheet I gave you on two fifty-one Mendel for a sign-off?
Well, let's see. Got a bunch of stuff.
It should say two fifty-one Mendel Road in the top left-hand corner. Certificate of Action, Special Permit Approval.
Okay, I see it.
Brian, do you happen to see it?
I haven't found it yet.
Okay, well, I gave you.
There was an organize, but apparently not.
No, that's okay. It's snowing out. We get all messed up. On this, there is, as we do on all solar, thirty different articles. If you want me to read them all, I'll read them all, but basically this one is signed off on May, was, do I have it right, Brandon? May fifth, twenty twenty? And then again, on October sixteenth, twenty twenty.
Sixteenth was when the board voted to approve the A date, I think, was the original plan, plans were dated that date.
Yep. I thought I had it all in here. Give me one second. With that, we all had that. We were just waiting for this certificate of action. Is that correct?
That's correct, yep.
Gentlemen, I don't know if you want to go through and read the whole thing, but like on all solar arrays, we do have almost thirty conditions that they have to do. Also, there was a decommissioning. Did we put a decommissioning fee on this, Brandon?
Yep. SW Coal provided that estimate, and it is, it's included in that document. I believe it was one hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Yep.
Okay. I'll give the boys a minute. We got five pages of stuff here. Sorry for the dead space. They have all those forms with the ad and everything in it. Brandon, with that, did you happen to talk to anybody on the finance team as far as putting that money in? How much did you say it was?
I have not had conversations regarding that yet.
Okay, I would like you to get together with Kathy, who is on finance. They have a passbook. You've done this before, correct?
No, the Mendel Road project is the first project that I've had in a cushion, so we haven't quite got that step yet.
We will get to Kathy. She will give you what she has to do as far as you putting that decommissioning fee into it. So the town has the right. You have to renew it every year, et cetera, et cetera, so we'll put all that together.
Yep. Yep, that sounds good. We will do that prior to, we still are a little ways out before we can pull a building permit, but we'll definitely do that.
Okay.
At any time.
Rick and Brian, you need more time? It's fine with me. Just take a lot of time.
I'm a little, I'm a little confused here. There's a whole bunch of paperwork. It looks like, I don't know whether it's all on the same project or not. It appears to be on different projects. I've got one, one thing here for performance. It would be helpful, I guess, if these things had a common title to them.
Rick, it's gonna be the one that says two fifty-one Mendel Road at the top, the very top left-hand corner.
Okay, I've got that.
That's the only one.
Okay.
That stapled together is the only papers.
Okay, now what about these two deposits for decommissioning? We're good. Go ahead. What are they, what are they for?
Those are for other, for other locations in town.
Okay, so what are we dealing with those right now? All right.
Right.
Just, this one's just two fifty-one Mendel Road.
Just that one set of papers.
That is correct.
Yeah, and if it helps, this was the one that was approved at the October meeting. I think there was a document, this was, the original document was signed at the November meeting, but then there were some clerical issues, so this is sort of a re.
A redo.
New, if you will, yeah.
Now, what happened to the the performance guarantee for decommissioning on this one? Okay, or does one ninety-five, has anything been done with that, that amount? That's quite a significant amount of money.
No, it's a it's one ninety, it's a hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Now, when does that actually get deposited? Or bonded, or whatever the mechanism is?
The mechanism has to go through Kathy at finance, and she has, I believe, a new mechanism to put it together. I don't understand it all, but if Brandon talks to her or the three of us get together, she has a special way that she wants to put it into the bank so the town is, has access to it. I don't know the correct terminology for it.
So it's only, it's only got to be done prior to commencing construction, so that doesn't have to be done at this time.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, so what are we, so they're looking for a set of signatures on this special permit?
That's why I gave it to you. I have the original here that I'll have to come with you guys and sign it, instead of you sign each one of those.
Right.
Okay, I mean, this is, this is just to correct the clerical error, so I would just make a motion that we, we sign this thing, done over with it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yep, Rick says yes, Brian says yes, Mark says yes. With that, I will find you gentlemen over the weekend, and we can sign it. And then better let me check with Pam, because there has to be a notary on this. She might want you gentlemen to go and sign it at Town Hall in front of her in order to have it notarized correctly.
That's, that's fine.
It's okay.
Okay, with that, two fifty-one Mendel will take care of that. I will find out for sure from Pamela Bonati, the Town Clerk, what she actually wants us to go in and sign it in front of her.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
No, thank you very much for your time. Sure appreciate it. While we're on that subject, where else am I? I can't believe we're running this early. Park Drive, anybody out there for that? Dave, they haven't come. Ten fifty-two Main.
Park Drive.
Okay, sir. Give me one second here. I know we're running a little early. I appreciate you coming. Do you have everything you want? Do you need anybody else to come in, sir?
No, so I'm Rob Bukowski with Weston and Sampson, presented at the last meeting. Andy Jung is on as well from St. Carfa, and Melinda Costello from Weston and Sampson is also on.
Okay, just let me read this. Proposed ground-mounted array at fourteen forty-seven Park Drive. This proposal is for a five-megawatt AC ground-mounted solar array. The applicant is seeking public hearing for a special permit and site plan review. What do I have in front of me here? Fourteen Park Drive. I believe, gentlemen, did I give you a park drive with a a package?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a set of plans and I guess that's it.
If you want to.
Morris's Lane.
I know I got a lot of them today. But did you get them are just seeking for a public hearing on that? Is that correct, sir?
That's right.
Make a motion for a public hearing for the proposed ground-mounted array at fourteen to forty-seven Park Drive.
With that,
Second, aye.
I will, all in favor? Rick?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
With that, let's see, fifty-two Morris's Lane, shall we give them? That'll be a public hearing. Want to give them half of that, well. I think they need more than fifteen minutes, so we make this one seven thirty-five. Twenty minutes should be good.
Yeah.
So we will make this public hearing at seven thirty-five on March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, for fourteen forty-seven Park Drive. With that, we'll put it in the paper and go from there. Is there anything else you'd like to say, sir, for Park Drive?
Yeah, one thing, Mr. Chairman, is since we submitted this, we've been speaking with the fire chief, as well as Patrick Hannan. And one of the things that he's mentioned that he'd like to see is twenty-foot access, three hundred and sixty degrees around each of the array areas. So we're working on making some revisions overall. I don't think the limit of work is going to change. It's just a matter of shifting some of the panels around, making sure we allow that access and potentially revising the stormwater. So that's what we'll be working on over the next week or so here.
Okay, with that, we were just saying, Pat came in on that. He needs fifteen minutes or more for his review, Pat Hannan. So the next meeting will I'll have to advance the next meeting, give you guys half an hour, so seven thirty-five, maybe eight o'clock for our next meeting. Half an hour, good for you, sir?
I think that's fine, yeah. I mean, I think we provided a little bit of an overview last time. Yeah, I think that's fine. So seven thirty-five is when we'd be on?
Seven thirty-five, March eighteenth, correct. Is that okay with, I know you're out there somewhere, Pat. I see you bringing in notes. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great. With that, we'll keep moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll see you on March eighteenth at seven thirty-five.
Okay, see you then. Thanks, again.
Thank you, sir. Let's see, Dave, you out there at all? No, about ten fifty-two Main, SciTech? No, with that. Ricky, we're asking. No, with that, uh, Ricky, we're asking you about, I have two more things to sign here. You gotta give me a second. One of them is for three fifty-five Main Street. This is those solar projects that we had continued on. It's going on four years now. I believe three fifty-five is the uh Little Gulf driving range
Yeah.
down off Main Street. This is just uh the same type of thing with monies. And I don't know if you gentlemen want to read it, the agreement. They are both the same, except the addresses change. Uh one of them is for three fifty-five Main Street, the other one is for five fifty Main Street. I don't know if you gentlemen have had an opportunity to read it. I mean, we've been doing this one for four years now.
Oh, really? They're just renewing that permit? Is that what they're doing?
Well, this, they're getting ready to go. They, each, if you look at the last page, they each have a decommissioning number from SW Gold. They are both different. One is for fifty-four, seven fifty, and the other one was for eighty-seven thousand. They have, uh, I guess, finally got their okay from EverSource to plug into whatever grid they have to plug into. And they asked for these to be done. I know we have uh continued this for four years now. So I don't know if you want to read them both. Give you a few minutes to read them. And the same thing, we'll have to go to Town Hall and be in front of the notary there to sign these papers. I will give you a time and a place so we can go in. You guys, if you have any time within the next week to go in, once we decide to accept these.
I mean, SW Paul has accepted both of these?
Yes, sir. Yep.
I mean, this is just procedural at this point.
Correct.
If they're satisfied with it, we've never argued with SW Gold before about the, the performance guarantee.
That's right.
I would make a motion that we sign both applications, the one for, blah, 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 let's see.
One is for three-
Five fifty Main Street is what I've got, and the other one is the, the three fifty-five Main Street. I would make the, I would start with first one. I would make a motion that we sign the performance secured by deposit of money for five fifty Main Street in the Cushing, Massachusetts.
A second down.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brian, aye, Mark, aye.
And I would, I would make us another motion that we approve and sign the performance secured by deposit of money for the property on three fifty-five Main Street, Cushing, Massachusetts.
I second that.
All in favor? Rick?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mark, aye, with that, thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
If it's, if it's possible, Mark, once we, once we get accumulated these things that need to be signed, if we get them all to the town clerk, so that when each of us goes there, we can sign all three of the things, or four, however many it is.
I will have them there. I have them right here in front of me. I'll bring them to the town clerk tomorrow. I will sign and we will go from there. It depends on how much snow we get. It's up to you. You know, you got to plow snow, Rick.
Why, yeah, I mean, it, it, uh, that's tomorrow, tomorrow Saturday. I'm not too concerned about next week.
Okay, probably anytime next week, that will be fine. It's okay with you, Brian?
Yep, it's okay with me.
I will have them there waiting for you.
Okay.
With that, where am I? I'm too far ahead of myself today. My goodness. While we have some spare time, uh, we're going to be switching all our advertisements from the Advocate in Fairhaven to Neighborhood News for advertising effective February nineteenth. Do we need a motion on that?
Motion to swap advertising to the
Neighborhood News.
The Neighborhood News, yes.
I second that.
With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Rick, aye, Brian, aye, Mark, aye, with that unanimous, we will take care of that. And while I have you, uh, I was supposed to get a form today, but they didn't get it into us. We have a common drive on Main Street that has been out there for maybe six months. Once we lost, well, it had to be out there the last two or three months anyway. I have to get that form from Pam and we have to sign it. It's just for uh the final release for a common driveway off Main Street, which is down past where the hen house used to be. I just have to wait for the paperwork to come in from Pam. I don't know if I have common drive, common drive. Hope it's a special form that Pam's gonna make out, and we'll have to do that. Is there a motion to accept that one?
I, I would make a motion that we accept whatever Pam comes up with.
Thank you. There is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mark, Brian.
Put the pressure on Pam.
That's okay. No, that's, you can put all the pressure on me. We lost Donna. Donna says hello to everybody. I talked to her today.
Oh.
She's getting a little better and uh she says hello. I don't think she'll be back, but she, she consults me and she's helped out an awful lot, so I really appreciate it from her.
While we're on, no, while we're on assistance, what, now what's going on with the a planner? Who, who, uh, who's in charge of, of trying to find another planner for us so that they, he or she can run around and get all this paperwork in order and make sure we've got everything organized for a meeting?
Yeah, we're gonna, uh, the building inspector had some ideas. We're gonna sit down with the town administrator and put out something. Maybe we'll look for a graduate just out of school who isn't that expensive. I have Jen now doing our, uh, all our minutes for everything, and I'm trying to break her in as a secretary, but she has a, a part-time job now. So we're working on that next week. We, I plan on going in with the building inspector to talk to the town administrator on trying to get a planner.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's good. I mean, I, I just don't think it's, it's fair to, to push all that on to you, to be quite honest with you. I mean, that's, it, it's another, it's another job in of itself, really.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, I, I did it, I, years ago, I did it for a while and, and it there are hours involved there to keep up with all the stuff.
Yeah, I've been putting in like four hours a day, separating everything out and getting it all put together. I've had help from uh Pam and her staff and conservation. Joanne's been helping me with some work.
I mean, that, that, that's all well and good, Mark, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to throw anything in, in front of anybody, but I'm just, I am anxious that we get somebody, uh, you know, that can put the proper hours in to get this stuff organized for us and for the meetings.
I know the, uh, selectman had made Pat, I don't know, given a lot of the, uh what am I looking for here? A lot of the stormwater stuff, but they made Pat a special project manager for the selectmen. And he is, uh, knows a lot about stormwater. I think he might get with Merrily on conservation as far as some of the stormwater aspects of these solar farms. So that's a little bit, but I don't think it's, uh, Pat is a planner. So we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Anybody else out there for three oh one Perry Hill or SciTech? Steve from SciTech, you out there at all?
Aims Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I see a Dean two, which could be the abutter, and a Mark, which could be his attorney, but I don't know. And, and there's a gentleman by the name of Christian who needs to mute himself from what I can see.
Okay, I don't, I haven't heard any Christian, but is anybody out there for three oh one Perry Hill? I believe it's two Mark and Gene. Francois?
Yes.
Or there's Yep.
Mark is here with us and Richard Burke is here with us. We're awaiting Dean Francois and his attorney, Mark Deschays.
Okay, I cannot push it because I put it on eight o'clock. I didn't realize we were slowing. We will
Yep.
be more than happy to wait for them.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. About Steve Giosa, is he out there?
Mr. Chair, this is Alan Clapp with Nextamp, and I'm, I'm the developer, and, and we're waiting for Steve to join us. I just texted him and he's on his way.
No, that's fine. I, I sure appreciate it. We've never run this early before. Usually we're messed up and running late. Please bear with us. Uh, it's highly unusual.
It's good to see. It's good to see.
I just can't thank all you guys enough. It's been tough without, uh with Henry gone and Donna being gone, but we're trying our best. Rick and Brian do a great job backing me up, and I sure appreciate it.
Not a problem.
With that, uh, why don't we just take a five-minute break unless you guys got anything you want on your minds? I don't have too much.
Um, this, this Form C subdivision plan in two thousand and eleven for White's Farm Inc. Um, I mean, that's just informal discussion. Uh, if there's somebody there for, for that.
That's all the same thing. They're all Steve Giosa from SciTech.
Okay.
If you look on your agenda, it's all three. He has ten fifty-two Main, Cushing Lane and White's Farm and Form C for White's. I don't, I remember that one was, I don't know if you were on the board then, Rick. All the way down the end of Cushing, you did a cul-de-sac with three house lots or something and
Don't, don't remember it, but
You remember
It was all, was only ten years ago, Mark, right? It'd be like yesterday.
I don't know. We've been on the board too long. How many years this has been? My goodness.
No, I don't, I don't think, uh, I don't think I did that one.
Well, I know I wasn't here.
All right, I guess we can just take a, take some time off until
With that, Nick, you still out there? Why don't you give us a, a ten-minute break, Nick? Is that okay?
Yeah, no problem.
We'll come back at seven twenty-eight.
Uh, quick question if I could. Did the, um, the Morse's Lane, um, solar farm be discussed? Was that discussed already?
Morse's Lane, yes, they continue the hearing, sir.
Uh, to what, what date, do you know? Please?
Yep, it is continued till March eighteenth at seven fifteen PM.
Great, thank you so much.
You're more than welcome. With that, we'll take a ten-minute break. No problem, let's get it done. Which one do you want to start with? Ten fifty-two Main?
Ten fifty-two Main would be, uh, the, the proper one to start with, I think. Um, is it okay for me to share my screen and we just give you a brief overview of what we're proposing?
Yes, is that okay with the members of the board?
That would be great.
Go right ahead, Steve. Let me read this part. How's that? Proposed solar array at ten fifty-two Main Street. Nancy Brito applicant, represented by Steve Giosa of SciTech and Thomas. The applicant is seeking a public hearing for a special permit and site plan review.
Okay, so, um, this is the, um, proposed solar project off of, it's actually, the address is ten fifty-two Main Street, but the location of the project is on the far east end of the project. So when you're looking at the exhibit on the board right now, north is to the top of the drawing. Main Street is way off a thousand feet to the west of where we're proposing this, uh, application. And as I guess a further frame of reference, if you remember, uh, late last year or last fall, we did receive approval for a solar project on ten fifty Main Street, which is the adjacent property. But that project was located off this drawing, again, about a thousand feet to the west um, closer to Main Street. This particular section of the Brito property, uh, the ten fifty-two Main Street property is the far west, uh, far east end of their property. So again, for further orientation, over here to the east of the site is Cushing Lane, Cushing Lane at the very far south termination point. This is the last house, uh, on Cushing Lane, just off the drawing here. And so the proposal would be to provide access, uh, extended down from Cushing through the White's Farm property, which is the other solar project we'll discuss this evening. And then, uh, entry into the, basically the east corner of the Brito land in which we are proposing to put the solar array in this configuration. Um, again, for this project, like we've done for all the others that we've been involved in, we started out with an initial evaluation of the property, topography, wetland delineation. And in this case, the wetlands are confined to an area on the west edge of the site, all the way over here. Um, we have an area of undisturbed trees after the wetlands, so we're not, uh, proposing any activity uh, in the wetland area, but because we are within the one-hundred-foot buffer zone, and the one-hundred-foot buffer zone extends right to about here. And we're really limiting the work in the buffer zone to just this, a little bit of stormwater management uh, down in this lower area of the site. The land has kind of a crown here in the middle with some of the water draining to the west, some of the water draining to the east and to the north. And so we've got a little stormwater detention area collecting the water on this edge in a similar collection, uh, system here on the northeast corner. Uh, the modules for the system are shown, uh, running across the middle of the site. We have a proposed fence line, uh, creating security around the entire array as required by regulation. And we have the equipment pad located, uh, next to our access drive here at the entry point. For access, we have the main access coming in and then a spur here to provide a turnaround point. Nice broad curb cut or radius sections to allow for, uh, in the event of emergency vehicles having to come out here, but primarily for uh, the long-term maintenance of the, uh, facility. Again, another equipment pad here. And, um, so a fairly straightforward project, an upland portion of the site. Um, it is, um, obviously subject to your jurisdiction under, uh, this, this process that we're applying for. We have filed the, uh, paperwork, the drainage computations, the support documents uh, with the board and sufficient copies as required by, uh, the regulations. Uh, tonight, obviously, this is an introductory meeting, uh, to give you an idea of what is being proposed and, um, to set the schedule for a eventual public hearing. And I'm assuming you'll look for peer review at some point on this particular project. So, uh, again, upland area, um, relatively mild grade, so the advantage of this particular site is we really don't have to do any earthwork, no major changes in elevation or grades anywhere on the site other than to create the stormwater management berms. We're working with the natural topography. So the water naturally wants to collect in this corner, so we're going to slow it down with a berm and a little outlet structure. And the same thing on the west side, we're going to work with the natural topography. We're really not hollowing out or digging out. We're really not hollowing out or digging out. Our basin will basically sit at natural grade, elevate a berm along this edge so we can capture all the runoff coming off this portion of the site. And a little detention and then an overflow into an upland area. And the runoff would continue down gradient in this case to the west and in this case to the north. The power itself would connect through the interconnection line coming back out to Cushing Lane and then back down Cushing Lane to the north. So relatively simple project in this case. I think we're a little over one megawatt for this. It's a relatively small project. And be happy to answer any preliminary questions until you have a chance to really get through the, the overall design.
Gentlemen, any questions? Rick, Brian?
I mean, just a comment, I mean, the, the last one that we just approved, the fire chief was looking for a 20 foot wide accessway around the perimeter of the whole site. I would assume that he would be asking for the same thing here.
Okay, I, I know that did not come up in the 1050 Main Street project. He did have input to us on what he wanted for some modifications to the access on that particular site. It did not include a perimeter drive, but.
As long as, as long as he's happy, that's fine with me, right?
Okay.
I'm not the one that's going to have to go out there with a piece of equipment and try and quell a fire.
Okay, so we'll meet with the chief before the public hearing and, and get some input directly from him on that, but that's, I'm glad you let us know that.
Ryan, anything?
No.
Sorry, to me. We'll bring you on at 7:35 Park Drive. We shouldn't need more than half an hour on Park Drive, right? We'll make it eight o'clock on March 18th for 1052 Main.
Very good.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just to save the proponent some time, the fire chief is requiring a 20 foot road, 360 degrees on all solar fields going forward. He also wants either a fire hydrant within 500 feet or two 500 gallon cisterns. He wants a vegetation control plan. And that's about it.
Okay.
He's, he's giving me those directions of what he wants on all the solar fields. And he wants it to be consistent.
No problem. I understand that's.
All right.
Pat Harmon, who the selectman made special project manager, who is dealing mainly with all the solar arrays now from the selectmen's point of view. Is that correct, Pat?
That was a good job. Yep.
Okay. You understand that, Steve?
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay. And with that, we will continue on to which one do you want to do next? That was 1052 Main.
Okay, we'll share again. This will be the Cushing Lane, Cushing Solar Project, which is the same general area. And I'll, I'll call up a, a drawing for that for you folks to take a peek at. So this is a portion of land owned by White's Farm. We are located again off Cushing Lane. So here's Cushing Lane heading to the south. North in this case is to the left side of the drawing. White's Farm owns this tract of land, which comes out to here. Comes all the way across and back down in this configuration. And again, Cushing Lane at the very south terminus is here. That last project we just looked at has its point of access coming along here, heading to the west, and then the Brito property is right here. So that other solar project we just showed you is down basically to the north and west of this particular project. As you can see, this is a little bit larger system being proposed here. We would, and we'll talk about the cul-de-sac on Cushing Lane in a minute when we, we go to the third item that we wanted to discuss with you this evening. But basically coming off that and having the modules located in the, the area that has historically been a cultivated field here in the back for White's Farm. As with the other project, in addition to doing a topographic survey, we had a botanist go out, map the wetlands. You can see the wetlands are this jagged line here on the east side of the site coming along and going off the property there. The darker green represents an existing wooded area that would be preserved against the wetlands as a buffer. And then the lighter green represents the area that is either existing field or an area that would be cleared to accommodate the proper shading limitations on the solar project. Access would again come off Cushing Lane, follow the same driveway that would serve the Brito project, but then branch off and run in this direction. And if we're understanding the direction correctly, we were bringing that access all the way to the end here, but it sounds like the direction is to make that a complete 360 degree loop and bringing it back, say in this fashion here. So we'll look at that moving forward. Equipment pads, we have one here and one here serving the project in a perimeter fence. One of the things we didn't show on this plan, which we will incorporate going forward, as you can imagine, we're, we're pretty isolated back here. This is a wooded swamp, undeveloped land heading to the south. We've got the back end of the 1050 Main Street property here. So again, undeveloped land back here. But we do have a residential property here and we were talking today about this, adding some landscape buffer plantings, particularly in this area here to help our neighbors on this particular site with some supplemental planting. So when we do come back in, it sounds like about a month, we will be presenting to you a proposal with some planting specifications for this critical area that we think will help, you know, be a good neighbor and isolate the project a little better. This is again, a larger project. It's about a two megawatt facility that is being proposed and would be operated by the same entity essentially is that is putting forward the Brito project. So there is some synergy between the two in terms of operation and maintenance and the like. And we think that's an important feature, given the shared access drives that would occur in this case. With the shared access, we're eliminating some alteration, additional alteration that would ordinarily have to occur. So we think that's a good thing. And then during construction, they've designated a stockpile area. They, in this area, we've, we've kind of set it here, fire this from the wetlands. So we have a good buffer there. And again, we think that that's, you know, fairly a good distance. We've got several hundred feet through the site. On this particular project, the natural topography is to the east. Generally a uniform kind of slope running through the site. As you might expect, draining towards the wetlands. When we did the drainage analysis, we looked at this as its historical use as a cultivated field. And then we looked at that modification with the gravel access, the equipment pads, the grass surface. And we have balanced the drainage out, so we think we've got a good balance on the drainage. But again, we know we'll probably be looking at a peer review on this. And then erosion control, we do have a silt fence line that would be running continuously along the east edge of the property, again, the down gradient side of the construction. So that again, we're protecting the adjacent resource area. So much like the last project, we'll be looking to get on your official agenda with a public hearing and see where that takes us.
Gentlemen, any questions?
No. One thing that, that would be helpful for me, you know, of all these solar projects, they're, they're pretty large scale projects is some, it doesn't have to be elaborate, but some type of, like a locust map so that we can see where the, the nearest residential units are around it. You know, I mean, if we're, we're talking about a place that's 1,000 feet from the nearest house, then that's kind of important for me to know. As opposed to, you know, just 50 feet from the property line. You know, we've got a row of houses in an older subdivision or something. I, I, I would like to see something that gives, gives us a sense of what the surrounding area looks like without getting too elaborate.
Yeah, no, that's an excellent idea. And we actually had our CAD person putting together that exhibit. He's going to do it on an aerial photograph. We think that that gives a much better, broader picture. And he's going to superimpose the arrays on the aerial photograph. And I think with that and a couple of dimensions added, we'll have a good picture when we come back for the public hearing.
Yeah, that sounds fine. I mean, just a, even just a, a simple delineation of, of the outskirts of the project on one of those aerial maps would be marvelous.
Yeah, no, it's easy enough for them to do. I, I can't do it, but my CAD people are very talented, so they'll, they'll take care of that for us.
Okay. I would make a motion that we put this on the March 18th agenda.
There a second? All in favor, Rick?
Aye.
Brian? Mark? Aye, with that, 8:25 on March 18th. Put that together. And one more from you, Steve.
Yes.
Well, let me read this. Let me make it.
Actually, you know, Mark, before we get going on that, I just have one quick comment. You know, where we have so many of these solar array projects right now and we've got, you know, a number of documents that are unique to each project. It would be great if on the heading of all the formal documents, we had the, the name of the solar array on. That will, I mean, I can just, I mean, you end up with piles and piles of papers and it ends up being way too easy to go over something or miss something. You know, to have to delve into finding the right paragraph that's got the, the, the name of the, the solar array project on it is, it's a little, a little bit cumbersome, especially without the administrative help that we, we just don't have right now.
No problem. Nope. And while you're commenting, what's the rule about solar? We cannot refuse a solar array.
A solar array project is a right allowed by, right allowed by, right anywhere in the state of Massachusetts. So we, we cannot just arbitrarily say no.
Okay, I appreciate that. I forgot to say it in the other ones, but thank you. Back to Steve Joseph, informal discussion regarding a Form C subdivision plan approved by the board for Cushing Lane in 2011, White's Farm Incorporated applicant, represented by Steve Joseph of SciTech, Thomas. The mile hour is missing and is requested that a new one be signed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Steve Joseph with SciTech Engineering. So what I put on the screen here is a replacement or a proposed replacement mile hour that John Romanelli was kind enough to provide the applicant. Same project we just looked at. So here's Cushing Lane. This cul-de-sac was created in 2011 and the plan was dated August 15th, 2011, in which the White's Farm folks proposed this subdivision, as you see it here. And it was basically to create a turnaround at the end of Cushing Lane. The plan was reviewed as a definitive subdivision approved by the planning board. It was actually endorsed by the planning board. But somewhere between the endorsement stage and the required recording stage, the mile hour was lost, never recorded. I think what happened is someone put it aside and forgot about it. And here we are nine years later with a approved plan and it was actually signed by the planning board members, but never recorded the registry of deeds. So when the attorneys for the, the solar project were doing the research and they knew about this subdivision, we're doing the title search, they came to the conclusion that gee, what happened to the mile hour? And we looked around and we asked John Romanelli. John was the original surveyor putting forward this plan back in 2011. And nobody seemed to be able to put their hands on the original mile hour at this point in time. So we asked John to talk to the registered land surveyor that he's working with today, if he would be willing to prepare a replacement mile hour, sign that, and then we wanted to at least present it to the board and see if the board would be comfortable with as an administrative task, re-endorse the mile hour. So it could be recorded with no changes, the exact same plan that has already gone through the public hearing process and no appeal was filed. And then allow the applicant then to be able to, the White's Farm folks to be able to record this at the registry of deeds.
Does the, does, wouldn't the town have a plan of this back from when this was originally done?
Yes, the town does. I, I think, Mark, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think in your records, you do have this plan in a print form with, with, you know, signatures on it. But we need the original mile hour for the registry to accept that. So we need a new mile hour created, endorsed, and then we could record that because the registry won't allow the recording of the print.
Right, I understand that. I, I, I'm kind of, kind of thinking about using it as at least a, something to compare to.
Yes, I have a photocopy. I have a photograph of one that somebody took, so I will forward that to the board.
I think I have it.
Oh, you already have it? Okay.
Let me just take a look at this one.
I did take a photograph, but the town had a printed there, records in the town hall, the blueprint.
10/17/11, I believe it says. I don't know if you all can see that, but I think it's the same thing.
Seeing as, would it be possible, Mark, for us to have SW call, take a look at the two documents and compare them? I mean, it, it means we've got to have some available funds to pay them. But seeing as we are not paying for a planner right now, I would, I would request that we find out if we can secure SW call to compare the two plans.
Whatever you want. I have this one here. It was 11/17/11.
I, I understand, Mark, but you know, again, it's, it's another thing where, you know, we need some administrative help here. And to try and put this on the board members individually in their spare time to, to compare this stuff is, is not, not fair in my, in my view. I would, I would like to, I would make a motion that we request from the selectmen, the ability to hire SW call to review the two plans and ascertain that they are in fact the same plan.
Was that in motion form? Is that what you want?
I thought I did.
Yep. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Rick? Aye. Brian? Aye. Mark? Aye. Are you okay with that, Steve?
Yeah, no, I think it's an excellent idea. I think everybody would have a higher comfort level.
Absolutely.
It's the same plan and I think we're, we're more than happy to wait to get that review completed. So no, that's, I can't ask for any more than that at this point.
Fantastic. With that, we'll wait till we get all that and move forward on that mile hour.
Okay.
With that, thank you for your time, Steve. I think the only thing we have left, 301 Perry Hill, David, are you out there? Thank you, Steve.
All right, thank you very much. Good night now.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am here. I have with me Mark Francois, owner and applicant, and attorney Richard Burke, representing Mark. And I believe I see Mr. Mark Deschays in the audience for the butter. So we're here as a part two to a preliminary subdivision submittal for property owned by Mr. Mark Francois. He currently has three retreat lot, or four retreat lots. One of them, which is built on with his own existing home that he lives in. And he is looking to reconfigure and make the three retreat lots go away and, and put in a definitive subdivision road. and, and put in a definitive subdivision road, if you will. It'll be done through the definitive subdivision process. And at the last meeting, after the last meeting, we generated a memorandum. We submitted it to all the town departments and boards so that we can solicit input for concerns and comments relative to the preliminary plan. We are aware of one memo that was submitted by the building inspector. We are not aware of any others. If you have any, we'd be happy to get them from you, and we'd be happy to go over any, any comments or concerns you may have as a board before we proceed with the next step.
This was from the building inspector dated February second, two thousand and twenty-one. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Gentlemen, do you have a copy of each of that? I'm pretty sure I gave it to you. Brian, Rick?
Yep.
I got that package that you submitted. I, I had a chance to look over.
No problem. I, let me just, I don't think I have anything else from anybody else. No? Have you had it, David? Have you had a chance to read from the billing inspector?
We, we have, and I'll, I'll start with Mr. Burke to start off because the first four items are sort of legal issues more than they are design issues.
Thank you, David. Members of the board, Richard Burke from Borogad Burke and Franco in New Bedford, representing with Mr. Dvigna and the applicant, Mark Francois. A number of the, the points that the building commissioner raises are more directed to an A and R plan, which we had talked about, as the board will recall, earlier utilizing the ancient way that goes through the property. But we, with this current submission, we are not pursuing the A and R plan. We are filing a full Form C subdivision, which is what the building commissioner is recommending. So I think that that addresses most of the points that he was raising and that he's recommending the Form C process. The other major change that is on the plan from what was previously before you is that we have relocated the new roadway to be entirely on Mark Francois's property. As we had submitted previously, we believe that there is a right of way to, an ancient way through Dean Francois's property and then through Mark Francois's property. But rather than arguing about that, we've simply revised the plan to keep the entire roadway on Mark Francois's property to resolve any issue regarding ownership or access. The other points that the building commissioner raised, he expressed some concern about whether there could be other potential development beyond the, the subdivision plan that you have in front of you from Mark Francois. And on those points, I think what the building commissioner was most concerned about was development at the end of the roadway, what's referred to as Trips Way on the cul-de-sac. And the board may recall, and it actually was submitted with the paperwork from my office and from Peter Paul's office when we were arguing about rights of way and access. The board had signed a, a, a plan in February of two thousand and twelve, which only allowed one house lot on the Trips Way property. And it limited further development of that property, requiring that there be no further development until municipal water could be provided to that property. And there were other conditions that were on the plan that the board signed, allowing one house lot only on that property at that time. So I think that it's highly unlikely that there's any potential of any further development of that property. And then by putting the right of way on Mark Francois's property, the earlier A and R that Mark and Dean had presented and that the board had signed back in two thousand and six, which again utilized this ancient way. But under this plan that we're proposing, the road upgrade would be entirely on Mark Francois's property. And Dean Francois would not be able to utilize any of that new roadway to gain access on his property for additional lots. So we think that it's a reasonable way that we're addressing the building commissioner's concerns that the roadway that we're proposing will be only for the lots that are shown on the new plan. One of which is already being used by Mark Francois. He lives in that, in a house on, on one of the, one of the lots. So with that, I, I would think we've addressed the, the building commissioner's concerns. And any other questions, of course, we'd be happy to answer, and, and David can address the issues of, of, you know, pertaining to the subdivision and waivers and so forth.
At the last meeting, we went over the, the waiver list, item by item. Nothing's changed. It's the same plan before you for preliminary purposes. The purpose of a preliminary plan is to solicit input from any and all departments that, that would eventually review the plan under a definitive. Given that we have only one letter submitted, it's my opinion, I believe we can move forward now with a formal filing of a definitive subdivision set of plans. We do not need a, a date for the next hearing, which you'll be there till midnight from what I can see. It will take us longer to put something together for the filing of a definitive plan. So unless the board has any further questions or concerns, we, we basically seek, which we know is not a binding vote, but a vote of a thumbs up approval for the preliminary at this point in time.
Do we know if there's any input from the homeowner at the end of the way? Trips property? I mean, how do they feel about this right of way being used for this?
I would defer to Mark Francois. He's had conversations with the gentleman. I'm not sure if, if he's available. Yes.
I am, yes. I've spoken to him. He knows that I'm planning on adding lots. He hasn't told me good or bad. He's pleased that he's finally gonna get an asphalt road. He's just tired of the dirt road, and he hasn't expressed anything negative or positive regarding what I'm doing.
Okay.
Rick, you guys any questions?
Um, you know, I mean, just, I, I am, I will say I'm struggling a bit with this one. I mean, it, we're now not talking about a, you know, a, a three lot subdivision or three lots with, with retreat lots. This, this is a regular subdivision road, and they, they are asking for quite a number of waivers here in terms of the width of the right of way, in terms of the width of pavement. And I took a, a look at the plan, shows that they've offset the, the road to one side, assuming that was for, for conservation commission purposes. But I, I this quite an assortment. We've, we've not looked at these things as providing a cheaper way to build the road to allow a full subdivision to happen. And this is kind of a full, a full subdivision. I, I don't see any difference from this or any other recent subdivision of land that we've, that we've provided. I know they've said that the road is gonna, would, would stay in a homeowners association and, you know, would not be asking for the town to take over the road. But, I mean, realistically, ten, fifteen years from now, you've got a bunch of people on this paved road that aren't getting town services. They're at town meeting requesting the road to be accepted. I, I'm I'm not totally comfortable with it, to be quite honest with you. Again, it would, that, that definitely would be setting a precedent for the board in terms of, of generating quite a number of waivers for, for just what I look to be a standard subdivision. That's, that's my comment. I, I, I'll be honest with you. I, at this point, my inclination is to, to vote this approval of that, of the preliminary subdivision plan.
May I ask, what is the difference between this one and the last one that you approved for a gravel road?
The last one actually was, was done to correct a new interpretation of the one hundred and fifty, one hundred and fifty foot setback. And, and the, the person had already done quite a number of, quite a bit of work. And, yeah, I mean, irregardless of that. I mean, again, that was three lots on a big piece of land and not maximizing the, the subdivision proposed, the subdivision. How should I put it? That was not a maximizing number of lots. There was a retreat lot proposal that was approved, and, and there would be three houses out there today without the, the quote, new interpretation of the, of the bylaw, which we had attempted to get corrected at this recent town meeting, but did not have time. I do not look at the two as anywhere near the same, David. I, I, I really don't. I mean, can we do three lots on this one and a gravel road?
We already have three lots beyond.
I, again, I, you know, I, I think you've got some, some basic waivers on, on construction for three lots, you know, three additional lots as it sits. And I, I do not look at, I do not, I, I, I will say directly, I do not look at this as anywhere near comparable to what happened on Peckham Road. If he wants to cut the lots in half, you know, that would be one, that would be one way to make it unique. But I don't think that's what he's looking for. He's looking for a, a full subdivision road that he can maximize the number of lots that he's putting on the property. That's not what happened on Peckham Road.
If I may explain something, that right now he has three additional retreat lots that are on a plan signed and recorded at the registry. In order, in order to build on those retreat lots, he has to build a common driveway sixteen foot wide gravel. The common driveway would be exactly what you're seeing on paper now, not paved, with no drainage system whatsoever. And he will run into the exact same setback issue of a hundred and fifty feet, which would basically negate building on any of the retreat lots. He's in the same position as the last guy.
Then let's do the subdivision for three lots.
Because
Then it's, then it's, then it's the same.
Paving the roadway for the length that we're providing in compliance with the minimum zoning requirements, which is twenty-two feet. Unlike the other subdivision, they didn't pave anything, and their length of road is very consistent with the length of road for this road.
I, I, I understand. And if we're talking, if we're talking about three lots on a gravel road, you know, I think then maybe we're, we're doing something that's apples to apples. But how many lots is this subdivision going to generate? New lots?
Two, two additional lots.
So five lots. That, see, that's, that, that's, does not compare to what happened on Peckham Road.
And not only that, with the thing on Peckham Road too, the rules got changed halfway through the process. Okay, when we, when that process was originally started, that wasn't the rule. It got changed halfway through, and that's what kinda threw that whole thing into a tailspin.
That, that's, that's actually not true. The hundred and fifty foot setback has always been in the bylaws. They didn't know it when they submitted the subdivision for retreat lots. When they put in this retreat lot plan and they did the common driveway, somebody didn't do their homework because they
Because we changed the rule, though. We, we put it, we put it in front of the town, and we changed it.
The, the hundred and fifty was, was in place when they submitted the retreat lot subdivision. It was always in place. Now there's a, there's a proposal to change the one fifty so that, because it makes no sense.
No, but I understand what you're saying. And I agree with you that the hundred and fifty was always there, okay? But we, we changed that rule. We, we, we changed the wording of it, okay? And now what we're trying to do is undo what we went and did.
I'm not sure I follow you.
Well, I mean, the difference, the difference is, I believe, is the new interpretation. We've never seen, we've never seen that particular interpretation arise on any of the other retreat lots, retreat lot proposals.
Can we go through the waivers, Rick?
Before, before we go into that, do we have, and you said there was a mark from the other person's lawyer there? Is there anything that he wants to say at this moment? I don't know if he's there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Deshaies, I have no comments at this point.
Okay.
I mean, you're welcome to go through the waivers, David, but
Well, I'd like, Rick, I'd like to understand that.
Five, five, it's simple. Three and five. Three to retreat, to replace the re- retreat lot proposal. If you wanna do three lots to, you know, replace the retreat lot proposals, I think then we're talking about a different animal. But we're not talking about that. We're talking about five lots instead of the original three.
Correct, but we're proposing twenty-two feet of pavement. I don't understand how you, you'd be better off, you're saying you'd be happier with twenty feet of gravel and three lots.
And three lots, which is the same type of, of development that we've approved in town for quite a number of years now. That, I, it's just my opinion. And, and again, I am, I am uncomfortable with the, the number and type of waivers that, you know, you would be looking for. Final subdivision plan.
Well, that's why I wanna go through the waivers. I wanna understand which waiver.
Fifty feet and twenty-six feet of pavement. With the, with the, with the roadway centered in the layout.
What does it matter if the roadway is centered or not? When there's no utilities? We have no water. We have no sewer. The, the purpose is
What, if what's the difference, then just do it that way. Like, we've required all the other subdivisions to do.
But you also just approved two, two roadways which existed, the layouts existed, and we have an ancient way that exists off of a pack, pack, Pembroke Ave, where you allowed twenty feet of pavement and two Cape Cod berms for twenty-two feet. And then you're allowing A and R lots to be cut off of that once they upgraded the roads. I, I really, I have to understand here why this is different.
Okay, before you, it's still, we're not talking apples and apples. We are talking about roadway layouts that were approved before subdivision control on one end. Now we're talking about an ancient way, which to my understanding, with all the legalese that we've heard, that, that ancient way, the purpose is to provide access to that one lot in the back period. That was, that was the opinion of our, of our, our legal counsel. It's also the opinion of the, of the building inspector. It's not the same. In my opinion.
I'm not sure that, well, we haven't seen the legal counsel's opinion, but I think his opinion was that there was adequate proof that you could take that there was a right of way with sufficient proof from my office and from attorney Peter Paul's office to utilize the ancient way for access. That was, I think, what town council said.
The one lot in the back. That was the original purpose of that, of that ancient way was to provide access across the piece, the big piece of property in the front to a piece in the back, which is kind of the history of roads in New England, actually. One farmer selling off a piece of his land to another farmer and granting him access across the, the front piece to the back. That's what I understood our town council to say, and why they said that the preferred route was to do a Form C subdivision.
It would be, if, if we had administrative help, we'd be glad to give you a copy of that opinion, letter, memo, whatever it was from town council.
I'm just looking to see if I have it. I don't know if I have it in this.
I know that. I mean, Henry, Henry had it before.
Yep.
I mean, I, my understood from what was read at, at the public meetings, that his opinion was consistent with our opinion that that there was a right of way to use it for access for
The lot.
The Francois, no, no, access to the, to the Francois The France, no, no, access to the, to the Francois property to uh, for Mark Francois to use it for access to his property uh as well, uh which is what we were arguing. Um, in our opinion, that there was a legal right of access through Dean Francois's property um, to Mark Francois's property. And that there was therefore a right of access to use it for that purpose, which is why we were arguing that we had a right to go through, you know, off of the uh Perry Hill Road uh over Dean Francois's property utilizing what's shown on your own maps. I mean, it it shows up um on old town atlases back into the eighteen hundreds uh in its current configuration. Um, and and that it was, it was uh utilized and shown on a plan when Mark and Dean Francois originally bought the property and then later subdivided it uh so that it's, it's available for access um for Mark Francois's property. Uh, we're not utilizing it in this current plan to prevent any argument, but our opinion was that there is a legal right of access. Uh, that was not just my opinion. That was attorney Peter Paul, a title attorney's opinion. And town council agreed with that and said there was, there was adequate um evidence for the uh court to be satisfied that there was access provided.
Uh, unfortunately, town council also said that in order to develop additional lots on the property, that a form C subdivision was the proper route to to go.
I would take some.
I, I, I agree, I would, I agree with that. I really don't see that there's any rights to develop additional lots off of that piece. That, that roadway, that ancient way was put in place again to service that one piece of land in the back so that somebody could utilize that property for whatever purposes they, they desire. I, I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree that there's the, that there's a, an ancient way there. Uh.
Well, I, if I could, I, I, I disagree from looking from the eighteen fifty-six Leventhal map at the Boston Public Library. The, it's the dashed line going out to a single house. I think your initial statement was it was something thrown out to reach a lot that was remote in distance about twelve hundred feet back from Perry Hill Road. And when the property was uh went out into different ownerships between the different trips, it then was put on, put on a plan, but it, it's always been a dashed line to service one house and is back in eighteen fifty-six, it said um Rev- Reverend Tripp's house. It basically is just a dashed line. I think your uh building commissioner is correct when he says it's, it's he has a problem with the ancient way. He thinks it's really simply a driveway. And I think um uh Rick was correct in saying, yeah, it was thrown out to service one house way in the back, twelve hundred feet. It's not an ancient way.
I, i- in any case, there's a house out in the back. Uh, they have access via that, that gravel road. I mean, when the two brothers split the property up, you know, whatever rights they had between the two of them, I have no idea. But again, that there's a big difference between an ancient way that was originally put in place to service one lot and a uh a subdivision approved prior to subdivision control. As we have many of those lots in the central part of town, a lot of the old subdivisions were done that way before subdivision control. We're, we're not, we're, we're apples and oranges here. You know, we're, we're not talking about uh the same thing. Uh, if we want to talk about a, a subdivision to put three lots back there to replace the three retreat lots that were originally purpo- proposed, then, and that's, that's one thing. But we're not talking about that. We're talking about a brand new subdivision roadway to maximize the property development of that parcel. That's, I, I, that's, that's my opinion.
So when you say three lot definitive, you're talking twenty-four wide gravel road.
That, just the same way that you see on, on Peckham Road. Three, three retreat lots or three retreat sized lots uh serviced by a common driveway. That cuts the roadway construction down and it, and it decreases the population density. It also reduces the, the, the cost to develop property.
But they wouldn't have to be retreat lot sizes.
Uh, as long as we're talking about replacing three lots with three lots or, you know, that.
Correct. They would just have to meet sixty thousand square feet, one hundred and fifty feet of frontage.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't see why not. Well, again, you know, we're, we're talking about something replacing a retreat lot. That's still, I'd have to think about that. That's apples and oranges again. I mean, what we're talking, what we were talking about in Peckham Road was, was literally apples to apples. It would be the same three lots with the three retreat law, three, same three houses with three uh with a common driveway and three retreat lots or three houses with quote, a subdivision gravel road that serves, services or serves as basically a common driveway for the three houses. That's apples to apples.
Someone else, and you're saying three retreat lots on a common driveway, correct?
Yeah, I mean, which is what we've approved in, all over town, over the last, I don't know, ten, fifteen, twenty years or so.
Well, we're now, we're going off astray here. They, they, they took the retreat lots. I don't know what the final numbers were for the two lots that the houses were going to be built on. The, the house in the back was an enormously large lot, but the other two lots, it actually got smaller because the retreat lots had, you know, slithers that went all the way back to the road that were gobbled up by the road. So those lots may not meet retreat lot sizes. But in, in this case, you know, we have, um, we would still be putting the layout over the over the ancient way so that the right side is going to be left and smaller than the, the left side. I don't know if we would do, do two lots on the right and one on the left or two on the left and one on the right. I, I'm just saying that if we came forward with a subdivision of three lots, um, the other the other caveat I'd like to ask, though, if we did that for three lots, it would really be four because we want to service probably Mark's existing home off of the new, the new twenty-four wide gravel road rather than continually travel on the other. So do you see that as an issue?
I, yeah, I do. I mean, we've been talking the, the bylaw reach, you know, a common driveway for three lots. You know, and that's just, that's.
Well, he can continue.
Type of thing here. I think that's, that's fine, but uh.
He could continue to use the ancient way. He still has the rights to use the ancient way. I was just thinking forward now that, you know, we could make the brother happy if we, if we allowed his house to be taken off of the new road, but the new road can just be for the three new lots, I, I suppose, you know?
I mean, I, again, I'm going to come back to what we had prior to this. You know, the number of lots we had prior to this, the retreat lot proposal and the number of building lots that you're proposing now, including the one that's already built.
Right, there are four total now. There would be four total when we're done. That's what I'm talking about. There are four retreat lots now. One of them is built on.
There would be four, I, I, without having the plan in front of me.
Yeah, no change in lots.
What's that?
No change in the number of lots. Mark has four retreat lots now. His house is situated on one of them. So he has three to be built on.
Okay, then I, 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 and my, then that's fine.
So one of them would be one forty foot frontage and the, the other three would be on a common drive.
No, we would do, we would do away with all four retreat lots and they would all be off of the new roadway layout.
But you need frontage on Perry Hill, am I correct?
Not if we come in with a form C subdivision, fifty foot wide layout, twenty foot wide gravel road.
Okay, I understand form C with three lots, correct?
I, I, I would, I would ask that you put together a plan that shows the layout that you're talking about.
Okay.
Okay. It's easier to discuss that way.
Why don't we just continue the, the hearing or get on your agenda for a month from now? We'll, we'll come back with an, another plan.
So you want to come, you want to come in on the eighteenth of March? Is that okay with you guys?
Sure. If, if you want to put us on early, that's great, but we'll take the, the late thing.
Well, I tell you what, how you, how, how about we do it this way? I will put you on for I'm up to nine o'clock. Nine PM, if something happens and we, we mess up and we get earlier like we did today, we'll sneak you. How's that?
And I would like to see you to come in with the original retreat lot proposal, the lot layouts on that, and then the lot layouts that you're that you would be presently proposing.
Okay.
Okay.
We can uh show the lines in red dash so that there's an overlay and then a clean version.
That's fine.
Okay, very good.
Uh, the lawyers applicable with this?
It's fine with me. Thank you.
That's fine, Mr. Chairman. Okay. With that, nine o'clock, but we'll end up squeezing you in somewhere. Is that okay?
That's fine, absolutely.
That'd be fine. Thank you.
With that, thank you very much for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that. With that, shh, 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 let me see. Do administration things here. I don't need you guys on that. I just have to sign a couple of uh.
You know, Mark, uh, if, if you have a chance, um in the interim, before we get, secure a, a town planner of some sort, uh could you bring it up with the selectmen uh that, that we would like to utilize uh SW call for some of the, some of these things that we've previously just had Henry do? I mean, I, I want to get you some help and us some help.
And I'll take it.
But I can just propose that to the selectmen and say, you know, we with the amount of activity we've got going on right now, we really could use some planning administration.
Help, 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 yes.
This, this is going to be the most, since I've been on the board, this is the most activity we've ever had.
Uh, you would miss someone.
I know that, but since I've been on the board, this is a lot.
Yep. We used to go till midnight, Rick. You remember those?
Oh, I, I do, I do. And, and I don't, I don't have any desire to go back to those days. And me running around like with my head, trying to keep a job in Braintree, raise a young family and run around doing all this administrative stuff with the planning board at the same time. Uh, I mean, that's one of the reasons I got offered in the first place.
Yep.
I was unwilling to visit these subdivisions, see how far they were coming along, coordinate with the, the, you know, the town engineer and, and all this other stuff. It's time consuming, if nothing else.
Okay, I'll both, I've just got a message from Pat saying that he'd like to help. He is, uh I don't know if he's in the planning, but he knows all about stormwater and stuff. He was selected by the selectmen or a special project manager. So maybe he can help a little with this. I see him signing some stuff on the, in front of me here. It's.
But I mean, like the thing, like these things with the solar arrays, I mean, Henry worked this stuff out. You know, and, you know, to a satisfactory uh conclusion and then presented us with the package. That's, that's the kind of, that's the kind of help that, that I'm looking for.
Support.
Hey, Mark.
Go ahead. Who's that? Pat?
It's Pat, yep.
Go right ahead.
I certainly have the ability to do that. And um I could have done that with Borrego, but I didn't want to step on the, on the planning board's toes. I, I talked to the chairman earlier today and um, I got inserted into this job just a little while ago. Um, I was looking to do uh most of what Henry did on a temporary basis until you hired somebody. And um I only worked nineteen hours for the Board of Health. And um I, I do a little bit of special projects, but there's not a lot of time involved in the special projects. And um I think it would work out well for you until you decided whether you wanted to have an intern or whether you wanted to have a full-time planner or get to the budget. You've got money left in, in Henry's budget. Um, and.
I would be glad to start you off with comparison of those two subdivision plans off of, what was it, Cushing Lane?
Yeah.
Let's, I, I would be, certainly be glad to start there. Uh, you know, and, you know, whether that means uh additional, I don't, are you paid for the uh the Board of Health work right now?
Yes, oh yeah, nineteen hours a week.
Okay, then, I mean, we're going to have to request permission to utilize you and, and pay you for that purpose.
And, and actually, the selectmen were um kind of in favor of me doing that. And then uh a question came up whether you really wanted to get a full-blown certified planner. And I, I think that's going to take you some time.
We, we, you understand where, where, we're coming from. We just, we need somebody to do the legwork.
I, I was a conservation commissioner. I was the chairman of the commission for three years. I get it.
Okay, okay.
Absolutely get it.
Uh, do you want to start, you want to start with the comparison of those two plans off Cushing Lane?
Yeah, I just think that the, the chairman needs to set it up with Julie and we're off and running.
Okay, Mark, if you could, if you could clear the way for us to pay him to do that, that would be marvelous.
Okay, I'll work on it tomorrow.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be a lot more comfortable in commenting to the folks calling me on the solar fields um, knowing that I'm not stepping on your toes. So.
Okay, we'll go with that.
Great.
Talk to the town administrator and go from there.
I think any help is appreciated for sure.
I take it as that.
Okay, thank you, guys. Okay, you're welcome.
About that, anything else, gentlemen? I think we got it all put together here. I don't have anything else on my end. I thank you for a wonderful wonderful evenings. And our next meeting will be March eighteenth, starting at six forty-five.
And I, I think the point I was trying to make sure, say before that, you know, there's a lot going on right now. But the, why I say that is because, yeah, back in those days when you did that, you also had a planner or you had five people on the board. Right now we're three guys trying to do it with nothing, no support.
Yep.
Okay, I think that's the difference.
The, the other, you know, the other thing, Mark, that I, I think needs to be looked at and, and brought into a meeting uh is a better understanding of this hundred inch fifty foot
Yeah.
thing, uh this hundred and fifty foot interpretation is. I, I'd be honest with you, I really don't, I don't understand the bylaw when I look at it and I really don't understand the interpretation. And I, I also don't quite understand why we couldn't get something on the uh, on the town meeting agenda to get the thing corrected. So I, I certainly would like to get some hours of proof for, for Pat to uh, to take a look at that in detail and, and give us a little, you know, a, a five-minute uh report on it.
Rick, just saying, you know, part of the special projects is to look into the bylaws. So, so that would tie in pretty well.
I mean, that, that's a specific one because that, that would seem to uh not contraindicate even having uh common driveways and even having retreat lots. And, you know, I guess we're here on the, on a public meeting right now. The the reason for retreat lots is to decrease the number of the, the, the footage of road that a town, that the town has to have responsibility for. And to reduce the population density for the undeveloped areas of town. And quite honestly, I think it's been very effective in doing that because it, the retreat lots tie up large amounts of upland many times, that the only other alternative would be to put in uh, uh, an actual subdivision. Uh, one of the things that most people don't understand is another thing that is in the state enabling act is that a property owner has the right to subdivide their property as long as it's in conformance with the reasonable rules and regulations of the planning board. So because of the dollars involved now, even if we tell somebody they can't have one lot, I mean, you're talking about a hundred and fifty grand. You know, that's a quarter per. You know, we, we've had them before. Uh, Deep Brook got disapproved. It came back later. It's now approved and it's in place because the subdivider figured out a way to do it within the reasonable. within the reasonable rules and regulations of the planning board. And, and they have to be reasonable, and they can't be arbitrary, because when you get in front of the judge, and I've had, I've been there more than once, you have to be able to, you can't say, well, I didn't like, adding more lots to the town of Acushnet, so I disapproved it. That, that argument doesn't work in court, and all it does is it utilizes town resources for, for lawyers and, and, you know, the subdivider's resources also. Uh, it, there, it, it was a way to have some development in town, without the burden of the roads, and without the, the density that is afforded by a typical subdivision construction. That, that's kind of the reasoning for it, and I mean, there's a number of subdivision, uh, uh, retreat lots in town. You can't even tell that there's houses back there. That, that was what people were screaming about thirty and four, or thirty years ago, was that the character of the town is changing. We had one thirty thousand square foot lot subdivision after another going in. I have three around me right now. If you ask me whether I would have three thirty, well, whether I would rather have, I don't, probably close to a hundred and fifty lots of thirty thousand square feet, or a few retreat lots around me, guess what? Give me the retreat lots. And, and the town has got less burden on town services like the school. Uh, a typical new subdivision, at, at the time, had about one point one, uh, kids per new house going in. It was a loser financially for the town, uh, and you had the roadway to take care of. I came in to the planning board when Squinbrook was being built, out off of Main Street on the north end of town. The next spring, uh, they was being constructed when I got on the board. The next spring, the road fell apart, and people could not even get to their houses. I saw last year the town back up there again, fixing that road one more time. Uh, it, it's additional roadways like that mean additional cost to the town, for maintenance and reconstruction of them as, as required. And in a simple statement to say that, well, we're gonna put six lots up here, and we're not gonna ask the town to, to uh, provide services following roadway maintenance up this road. Unfortunately, after ten or fifteen years, if somebody's been paying the same tax rate that everybody else in the subdivision has, they're gonna be at town meeting asking. I'll, I'll shut up, sorry.
Now, was I wrong? It, now that hundred and fifty foot thing for that right, for that common driveway on Peckham Road, I, halfway through that project, we rephrased the words to, to that hundred and fifty thing, to, to, to the distance.
I, I, you know, again, I, I think we need a, a close review of the problem section of the bylaw, and, and then we need to provide the.
We need clarity.
We, we need clarification first. You know, we already tried one time to get it on the agenda, to get that hundred and fifty foot deleted. That was an add, that was, that was added at one point in, in the, uh, in the town bylaws, and I, I just, I, I didn't, I don't understand why it's in there. I really don't.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We did that halfway through that project is when we did that. We changed that. We, we signed all, you know, we did all these things and changed that bylaw. And then after we figured, you know, once this came up, we said, oh, now there's a problem. So that's why we were resubmitting it to the town again to say, hey, that, this is wrong. We need, we need to fix this.
Yeah, in the meantime, you know, somebody.
Right, bingo.
Got, got stuck with a lot of construction that, you know, if, with the right advice ahead of time, uh, either he wouldn't have done it, or, I mean, you know, actually, that's irrelevant to me. Would I rather see a subdivision road, with six lots out there, that the town's gonna ultimately take the responsibility of, of maintaining, uh, and collecting rubbish on and all that other stuff, or three lots where the town has no road responsibility? I'm, I'm, that's me. I'm there. That's what I want. That's, that, I think that is a good financial way to, allow some property development to happen in town with, and create the least amount of burden possible. Versus a subdivision.
Okay, guys, it's eight thirty. I wanna thank you for your time.
Okay, Mark, I'm sorry.
That's okay. You guys are great. I appreciate everything. Thank you for your input, Pat.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, we look forward to you, Pat, helping us out.
Yep.
Oh, I hope.
And Mark, I, I, I wanna sincerely thank you for spending the time that you've been spending, you know, to keep all this stuff straight and keep us signing what we should sign and not signing what we shouldn't, and, you know, arranging with the town clerk to get us in there at the right times. I, I do really appreciate that.
I second that.
Well, I still have a minute. Those packets that I gave you guys, the ones for, you got packets for Cushing Lane Solar and, ten fifty-two Main. I need those back to hand them out, but I wanted you guys to have those, just to take a look at them.
Okay. Uh, they'll be, they'll, I'll leave them, I, I mean, I'll, I can leave them on the porch of my house tomorrow morning, maybe, well, maybe not tomorrow morning, if it's still snowing. Stop by tomorrow and my wife can hand you the, the stuff.
That's fine. I don't have to do it tomorrow, as long as I get it for next week, 'cause I'm gonna hand them out to everybody. So, all the heads of the, the Board of Selectmen, well, the Board of Selectmen, I can hand them out to you, Pat, once we get this all, all straight away, correct?
There we go. There's, there's, there's another way we would like to use you.
Yep, actually, you will be able to leave things in the office at the planning board, so.
Yep, we'll just get your key and you can go from there.
Yep, do you, you're aware that that office has no phone, right?
No phone, no computer. We lucky we got heat.
One, one of the problems I've been hearing from everybody is that there's no place to call and leave a message, and it wouldn't hurt, now that you have an admin, um, to get a phone in there and get some voicemail going and.
Uh, we'll have to find out. I guess uh, Jim takes care of all that. I usually, I usually make all the arrangements for the appointments and everything, so we know what's going on.
Yep.
They call me for that one, and we'll go from there. We'll move forward.
One step at a time.
You got it.
All right.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
And, and.
Second.
Second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bye.
Mark, Rick, and Brian, thank you very much at eight thirty-two. Thanks a million, guys.
Okay.
See you guys later.
Thank you.
Good night.